Good evening. I call to order the Cleveland Heights University High School District Board of Education Work Session Meeting. Thanks for joining us. Mr. Heinz, will you call the role?
I will. Mr. Posh?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Me, here. Ms. Wright?
Here.
Ms. Serini?
Here.
Before we begin our work session meeting, I need a motion to for the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move reconsider the consent agenda.
Aye, second.
Mr. Heinz, will you call the role?
Oh, yes, for consideration. Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz, yes. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
And Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
Laverne Jones has been the administrative assistant at Fairfax since way before my children attended Fairfax. And so I'm just, I want to wish her well on her retirement because she has been such a permanent fixture of that building. Everybody knows her. Thank you for your service to the district. Ms. Jones?
Heinz, will you call the role?
Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz, yes. Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
I will now turn this over to Superintendent Kirby.
Thank you very much and good evening, everyone. We are back to provide an update on our 2026 strategic plan. If you recall in August, we did have updates on goals three, four, and five. And tonight we will share updates on goals one and two. We will talk specifically about those elements that are in our strategic plan. This is not a session focused on the report card, though there will be some reference to some data items that are connected. I will quickly note that we did receive our report card from the state. The district met state standards as outlined in the new metrics. And of our schools, 10 of 11 met state standards or higher. The only school that did not was our virtual school. So we certainly are pleased with that. You'll also note throughout the presentation, there'll be reference made to performance on third grade. I'm very proud that our students continue to outperform the state on third grade reading, the early literacy metric. And also the district earned a star rating of five in gap closing, which specifically is connected to closing educational gaps within schools. So there'll be a little bit more sprinkled in throughout the presentation. Just wanted to share some highlights. We'll also be sending out a communication to the wider community so people do understand our performance on the report card. You can also put it into some context. Definitely want to thank the very hard work of the entire leadership team in the district, especially the ed services leadership team, many of whom are here tonight as well. In addition to our teachers, our administrators, and our wonderful parents who partner with us each and every day for students. You all know how hard everyone here works. That goes without saying. It was nice to see some nice gains because of that hard work. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gould, who will take us away on goals one and two.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. Thank you Superintendent Kirby for allowing me to take us away. We, as Superintendent Kirby shared, we will be sharing goal areas one and two this evening. I echo her sentiments in regards to the outcomes that we have seen on the report card. And so tonight we will share some of the information in regards to what was happening in 2223 and how we will move forward in 2324 with the continuation of the work. Our presenters this evening are the directors and also some ed services team members are here. And I want to acknowledge each of them who will be presenting tonight. We have Dr. Lashonda Abduzatar, our Director of Social Emotional Learning and Academic Support. Ms. Allison Byrd, Director of Data Research and Assessment. Ms. Rachel Coleman, Director of Principal Leadership. Dr. Michael Jenkins, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Karen Liddell Anderson, Director of Student Services. Mr. Robert Swaggart, Director of College and Career Readiness. And also from the ed services team we have in our audience, because they will probably participate, excuse me, in some of the presentation, we have Ms. Karen Heinsbergen back there. Joyce Bukovic. Rebecca McDonald. Toya Robinson. And Paul Resinko. Who are our so, so we will hear from them also this evening. Components of our strategic plan, what we will share this evening are the goals that we're looking at, those broad, long-term aims. And then we will talk about some objectives and we'll share a lot in regards to action steps and what is coming up next. Just a reminder of our key data targets here, or our KPIs as they are often referred to. Just looking at, as Superintendent Kirby has always already shared, about our third graders reading at or above the identified grade level. Our students will show proficiency on our state assessments. We are looking at our students and how they are doing in algebra, as well as looking at our students and them completing our course requirements in four years and also them being able to pursue college and a viable career beyond Heights High. So beginning with strategic goal area one, before we do anything, you know, we like EdUSpeak. So there are several tabs in here that have some EdUSpeak glossary here for your review. We won't go over these, but those definitions are there for many of the things that we may say this evening. And the members who are presenting will also reference and elaborate a little bit on some of those acronyms that we are using. Some things that we have not seen in the past is that we will use a term called co-plan, co-serv, or we are known as C3 teams. This is from our equity work. As we continue to look at the teams on how the child learns and how the teachers incorporate those understanding in their way of collaborating and what we call co-planning. So that's what we mean by co-plan, co-serv, co-learn. Looking at the next page of glossary of terms, one of the things that we've talked about before, but we also want to highlight, highlight is our multi-tiered systems of support, offerings, reference as MTSS. This is something that we are doing school-wide. It is data-driven, proactive, about looking at academic and behavioral outcomes for all of our students in order for us to be able to provide them with effective systems to truly improve what happens at what we normally say the universal tier or the general education classroom. On our next slide, you will hear Bob talk a little bit about the PACE framework. And I think he did highlight some of this when we did our college and career readiness update. But you'll hear more about that planning and career exploration, as well as Pathos, which has now changed to a new platform. And then you will also hear more in-depth about the Trauma Informed Action Plan. So that is just to highlight some of the things that we've normally not talked more in-depth about, but that you'll hear more in-depth about this evening. And so I'm going to turn it over to Allison Byrd, who will share with us progress on those 2026 key data targets.
Thank you, Dr. Gould. Is the volume okay?
Yeah.
All right. So at the start of the presentation and every district presentation, we share the key data targets of the 2026 strategic plan. I'm going to spend the next few minutes just providing an update on our progress towards those larger goals. So first, we are working towards having 100% of our third graders reading at or above their identified grade level. Last school year, 67% of third graders were identified as on track to reading at grade level as determined by our reading diagnostic. This assessment again is given at the beginning of each school year and testing for the 2324 school year is currently underway. It will conclude this month. For the second target related to demonstrating proficiency on the Ohio State tests, 44% of students demonstrated proficiency across all of the state tests. But it's important to note, as Superintendent Kirby began in her introduction, that the percent of students proficient or higher increased in 14 out of the 20 tested areas. So while we haven't hit that target, we are getting closer. So we're seeing the incremental progress. The third point, 90% of ninth grade students will have course success in Algebra I. So we know that students at our middle schools also have the opportunity to take Algebra I for high school credit. So they are also included in this calculation. I think it was Jody that reminded us a couple of presentations ago, like, don't forget about those seventh and eighth graders, even though the language of the plan is written to focus on ninth graders. So we can see that of all the students in grades seven, eight, and nine, specifically the class of 2026, who attempted course credits, 75% of them earned all of the credits that they attempted. And when we focus solely on the class of 26, that would be the ninth graders, 65% of those students earned all of the credits that they attempted.
Okay.
Now Allison, I do have a question on that. Can you go back a second? So when you say the class of 2026, does that mean the 65% are only the kids who took it in ninth grade? Or would that include kids who had already taken it when they were in seventh and eighth previous to that? Does that make sense?
It does make sense, and that's reflective of the students who took an algebra course in the 2223 school year. So it would not include seventh and eighth graders who may have earned it prior to starting high school.
They would have been included if we had looked at it. Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
No worries. So we'll move on to the next two targets. 95% of students graduating in four years. So our state report card identifies this information a year behind. So the 2023 state report card was just released. We were to look at that, it would reflect the performance of the class of 2022. Therefore, your graduation rate is 88.9. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that when we look collectively at all the districts in the state of Ohio, the state graduation rate is 87.3. So our rate is above that of the state. And Superintendent Kirby has been waiting to share this information. Preliminary data for the class of 2023, that's the group that just finished this past, this most recent school year, is 90.3%. And this, this rate will be reported on the 24 report card. So you'll hear us say it again. Because we want there to be any confusion about, well, I thought, you understand. So the final point, our final key target for the 2026 plan is 90% of students will pursue college or a viable career. Now, the one data point that we use to monitor that comes from the National Student Clearinghouse, which looks at not only enrollment in college, but persistence in, in college. And our most recent report that we received from the Clearinghouse in August of this year indicated that 49% of the class of 2022, again, also a year behind, enrolled in a two- or four-year institution at some point the year after graduating from high school. Now, we have a newer component as part of the Ohio State Report Card that includes 11 different measures that are intended to help public districts gauge whether or not students or how prepared for life after high school students are. Again, I say it is a newer measure. So right now that information is being reported. And we're all learning and working to understand the fine details of all 11 measures and what that tells us about students, what students are choosing to do or what they're able to do after they graduate from high school.
So in the future, will we probably see those 11 things broken out to know what they are? Like, for example, how, what percent of kids went into the military?
Yes, we will see that information. Yes. So I know, like, three of the points are Ohio means jobs, credentials that have been earned, industry-recognized credentials that have been earned, college credits that have been earned. But again, it's a, it's a newer measure. This one will also be a year behind. So it won't, we won't report on the most recent graduates, but those who came the year before, just like we do with graduation rate.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I really wish on the state report card that actually show you, this is for the data for the year previous. Because it just doesn't make any sense.
Mm-hmm. It's very confusing for people.
And, and I'd also like to point out for the number one point where a year ago, the graduation rate was 88.9, which is above the state average. But we only earned, earned two out of five stars on the report card. You got to wonder, how do you calculate two stars when you're above the state average? I mean, I could live with three and a half stars if that was really the case, okay? But, I mean, you have to get like 98% of your graduating class to get five stars. And I don't even know, I, we'd have to, we'd have to tease out the data. But I would imagine one or two, one or two districts in the, in the state maybe get, get that high. It just seems like such an unfair rating.
So I hope we're focused on the performance and, right, and celebrating the success that we've had here. And my colleagues are now going to talk about how we got here. So I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Gould and Mrs. Coleman, who are going to speak about goal one.
So one of the key items that we use district-wide in our schools is called the Building Level Action Plan. We also have an action plan that is for our district and it is really guided by our strategic plan. So in 2023, we hold an annual retreat with all the building leadership team members, as well as the principals. In that meeting, we are reviewing data. We are talking about goals. We're looking at action steps and how we will plan for the upcoming year. This is also supported through what we call district learning walks. When we're going into buildings after the building leadership team has presented to us in regards to their goals and action steps that they are implementing, we go in and look at, do a learning walk in classrooms with teachers. We talk to students. Some of the teams have parents that are on the team, so we're able to get feedback from them. And then we provide them feedback around their particular goals and action steps. The building leadership plan is monitored monthly and supported by an ed services team member. Each ed services team member is assigned to a building to help support with the building principal any things that they may need in order to assist in moving their plan forward. This is also, the data that we monitor during the, the Building Level Action Plan is also part of the data that we look at in our district leadership team meetings. So there's a monthly calendar that aligns with what schools should be looking at as far as their data is concerned and how they should be looking at those plans. And so now I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Dr. Gould. Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? I think so. I hear myself, so. Good evening, Superintendent Kirby and board members. The Curriculum and Instruction Department focused on three objectives in goal one of the strategic plan. The first objective was to use, was the use of board-adopted core materials to provide high-quality instruction. So the action steps taken last year included building common knowledge around the need and use of high-quality instructional materials, along with piloting high-quality instructional materials for English Language Arts. Our next steps for this year will be now to implement the board-adopted high-quality instructional materials for English Language Arts and now pilot the same for math, so high-quality instructional materials for math this year. Our second objective for goal one was to provide parents with tools and resources to support their students' learning. So something we did last year as an action step was the presentation of topics during the Heights Family Academy. And our next steps for this year will include the distribution of family letters from our adopted core materials and supporting families utilizing their students' access to the online learning platforms. I'm now going to ask Allison to speak a little bit about our third objective.
And that is around adjusting the assessments and assessment cycle to better align with student needs. Last year, our focus was on revising common tests to include more questions that mirrored the level of rigor required by grade level standards. We did this by incorporating and releasing Ohio State test questions into our existing tests. This year, we continue that work with the use of the Ohio Benchmark assessments in mathematics and English Language Arts. The benchmark tests meet the test blueprints of the Operational Ohio State Test, or OSTs. The responses are machine-scored, so that's one thing that teachers don't have to take care of. They, they won't have the burden of scoring and entering those results, results in another platform. And we will receive scale score reports similar to those that were received for the operational tests that we will be able to share with students and their families, providing another, more timely means to check in on progress and identify any instructional shifts and supports that are needed. Now I'll hand it over to Mr. Swaggart.
All right, as we are continuing to look at college and career readiness here in CHUH, there are several action steps that we've been closely monitoring, creating, and then also getting a chance to follow up and provide some additional support for our buildings. The three pieces that I want to talk about this evening include our Career and Technical Education Strategic Plan, monitoring and increasing our two- and four-year college enrollment and persistence rates. And then, of course, as we've already heard a little bit today, is celebrating and then monitoring and also continuing to work on the four- and five-year graduation rates to hit our strategic plan goals. So as we're thinking about the Career and Technical Education Strategic Plan, last year, there was a lot of time and energy and effort spent around just pulling together the stakeholders, receiving some feedback from our district consultant, Steve Farnworth, and really looking to see how do we put a strategic plan in place? What does that look like? So we did spend some time last year drafting that plan. We received feedback from our CT lead, superintendent, and then also some other key stakeholders here in CHUH. And our goal for this coming school year is to finalize that plan, make that plan public to the different groups that will help implement that plan, and then to start really working towards hitting those metrics that we set out in the strategic plan for Career and Technical Education. You already heard how that is directly tied to upcoming measures and future report cards when we start thinking about college, career, workforce, or military readiness in the state. So it's going to align very seamlessly as we think about what's happening in Career and Technical Education, as well as what's happening here in CHUH. We're also going to continue to keep an eye on the two- and four-year college enrollment and persistence rates. So one of the data pieces that we do take a look at is the National School, the National Clearinghouse data report. And as Allison already had shared, that in 2022, 49% of our graduates enrolled after high school graduation. There's a little bit of input when we get, or a little bit of data that we get that talks about, do they enroll in the fall? Or do they enroll anytime in the year following graduation? So we kind of look at both of those. And with this year, group of students that just graduated, our Gear Up program is going to even continue to provide support to increase the number of students enrolling in the next school year. So even though they might not have enrolled here this fall, we're going to try to follow up and make sure that they've got some support in order to get, to, to register for college classes at some point in this first year. When we talk about persistence...
Bob, I have a question on that. Does that include trade schools when you say two- and four-year college?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
And even through that, I know that we want to continue, that's why the National Clearinghouse does a lot, and they give us a lot of data. There's still some schools that they won't get data from, so this current school year, when we follow up with students, we're going to try to make sure that we have even better data than what the National School, or the National Clearinghouse could provide us by following up. And we're going to do that through our partnership with College Now and our GEAR Up program, and really make connections with students that recently graduated.
Thank you.
But not only graduation and then enrollment in college, but it's also the persistence piece that we're looking at. So in 2021, we had fifty-four percent, fifty-four percent of graduates enrolled in sometime the year after high school graduation. Now follow me here. So we have fifty-four percent of students graduate, and then they moved in, right into college. Of that fifty-four percent, seventy-seven percent persisted from their first year of college to their second year of college. So we're really thinking about what does it look like to enroll sometime in that year after, and then how do we make sure that we're continuing to support students? One of the things that we are constantly trying to help them work through with our student population is, like, how do we make sure that we persist by, when financial aid maybe drops off in the second year? Or what does it look like to make sure we continue to fill out the FAFSA each and every year? So those are some of the things that we want to continue to work on, is helping parents and families know that those services are available, have, build a really trusting relationship with students while they're with us, and then support families as they continue on that college journey. So as we're thinking about our goals for 2324, we want to continue to follow up and provide support for students in our GEAR Up cohort of 2023, and then we want to continue to focus on college application, scholarship attainment, and FAFSA completion for students in that 2023 cohort, as well as the students that are getting ready to start that journey because they're part of our 2024 cohort. One of the big components is some minor modifications in when the FAFSA is taking place this fall. So normally, we're used to an October launch date. That is postponed until December or January this coming school year, so just continuing to work with our students and families to be ready for that. We know that the window will be a little shorter, but hopefully, as the federal government continues to work through that process, it will be an easier application for students and families to understand. So even though it's a little bit of a delay this year, I think that ultimately we'll be in a better spot in future years.
So I have a question. The drop in percentage of students who enrolled in something after graduating between class of 2021 and class of 2022 is significant. Is there any national data on that? Do we know where we fall compared to other school districts?
That information is available. I don't happen to have those numbers at the ready, but we can share that with you.
Because, I mean, just, you know, reading about what's happening in the country around higher education and whether or not it's worth the cost and all that, I just, I'm just wondering where, where we sit, because we want to encourage our students to go on and do something after high school. But they're obviously affected by the water that we're all swimming in, so.
When we think about the monitoring, increasing the four- and five-year graduation rate, knowing that 2122, we were at that eighty-eight point nine percent for our four-year, and then the ninety-one point six for the five-year graduation, and as was shared earlier today in this meeting, we're at that ninety point three percent for preliminary data for this last class, so hopefully this time next year, we'll be saying, yes, we confirm that, hit that data target. And really, we want to continue to think about that monitoring piece. So in order to get that ninety point three, it was very specific about, we had to know where each student was with their credits, with their competencies, and with their readiness. And that is all about what we're doing, working with counselors, working with students, working with families, to make sure that we're meeting those benchmarks. So with the credits, it's meeting the, the required number of credits that we have, is making sure that we have the competency scores that come along with state testing or some of the alternative components to measure competency, and then that readiness is really our seals. So you've heard me talk in the past about the locally-defined seals, the, the state-defined seals, all of those come under the umbrella of how students demonstrate readiness. And so we do a lot of monitoring with students to earn that ninety point three percent, and definitely big kudos go out to our high school team that is, got their data walls and their charts, and they're knowing what students need to be enrolled in certain courses in order to meet the, the credits, the competency, or the readiness benchmarks. And so now I'll turn it over to Dr. Gould, I believe.
So I will share action steps for 2223, and then Ms. Coleman will share the next steps for 2324. One of the, the objectives that was looked at for principal leadership was the implementation of the OTES evaluation, or the Ohio Teaching Evaluation System. One of the focus things that was done in 2223 was really to take a look at the OTES 2.0 rubric and establish a clear understanding of what that looks like, what it sounds like, and what it feels like when you're in a classroom setting, and to have a focus monthly on one standard, to really make sure that principals had a clear understanding of that particular standard. This allowed for principals to really be able to calibrate their learning around that standard and really be able to provide teachers with some really good and valuable feedback as they were doing learning walks and completing their cycle. And now Ms. Coleman will talk about the next steps for 2324.
Good evening, everyone. So we are going to continue our work with OTES. We're going to use our rubric to practice and provide feedback during walkthroughs and observations. So really, having the walkthrough and then scheduling the time to go over feedback with the teachers so that they can understand next steps, and then my work will be making sure that the principals are able to give effective feedback. We're also going to utilize OTES as a coaching tool to provide a system of support, so the evaluation system is actually a piece for coaching. So we'll identify areas that we need to focus on as principals to get better in in that field, and then do that work. And then something I'm really excited about is that we're doing a book study with Building Thinking Classrooms and Mathematics, which is a monthly book study for principals that's going to be led by Joyce Bukovic and Becky McDonald. And so it's really a time for principals to actually get into professional development and have a year doing that work. So we'll actually be able to sit for an hour at each principal's meeting and put practices in place because we know that math is still an area that we need to improve upon.
Does this tie in with our work piloting new math curriculum?
Absolutely. So one of the things that Joyce and I talked about is such a great time for us to do this because we're piloting a program, and during this time where teachers are piloting, principals are studying. So when the two come out next year, we'll have a group of principals who have studied for a year and giving really concrete examples of feedback, along with understanding different strategies for math, and then we'll have a math program or a math curriculum that's ready to roll out as well.
So Rachel, sorry, I just need a little bit more clarity. So this is work that's going between just the principals? Or is it the principals and the teachers?
So right now, it's just the principals. There are a select group of teachers at the high school, I believe, that have volunteered to also engage in this work. The big thing about making sure that the principals have the workforce is that typically we get some PD and then we have to go right out and put it into place, and so we really want to make sure that our principals have time to delve deeply into that work, to understand it, and then provide critical feedback to our teachers so that we can make sure that we see gains in math.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we're really not then deploying OTES 2.0 across all the teachers just yet?
Oh no, these are two different things. So OTES is our evaluation system. The book study is exactly that. We're studying a book at our principal's meetings, for part of our principal's meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Gould to talk about our retention policies and supports for our transition grades.
So we're reviewing our policies. It's something we do on an annual basis to continue to look at policies, and one of the policy that stays in our forefront is our retention policy, because there is oft in time that there is legislation that may impact that particular policy. So we continue to do that work, and one of the policies that has really stood out for us is the third-grade guarantee. So we really had to take a look at what we have in our retention policy aligned to that particular legislation. We also, the school leaders also had an opportunity to transition with our fifth to sixth grade and our eighth to ninth grade students. They actually went and talked with the students, as well as the counselors, also to provide those supports during transition grades, as well as held meeting with, with parents. The fifth and eighth grade students also had an opportunity to visit the schools that they would be attending as well, and participate in some activities, and many of the board members were also a part of the eighth grade activity that we held at Tri-C Campus, where all of the eighth graders came together, their counselors had an opportunity to speak with them, the high school principal had an opportunity to address them, and we also had Coach Mack, who gave a very wonderful keynote presentation on about being an academic, academic person and not just an athlete. So we definitely appreciate that. Also, this summer, our deans had the opportunity to do some home visit with many of our families, students that, that were provided to us from the receiving school that may have needed some support as they transitioned to particular grades. We wanted them to connect with a trusted adult before actually entering into that school, as well as talked about some key things of how to access information, as well as any needs or supports that the family may have needed. So the deans participated in those home visits during the summer. And now I will turn it over to Ms. Coleman to talk about what we're going to do in 2324.
Thank you. So this year, we are going to facilitate the co-creation of a common district-wide transition process for fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. Last year, we did have the process in place, but it looked different at both middle schools, so we want to work to just have one seamless process, and that's some work that we'll be doing this year, and then also having a process of how we move our eighth grade information to ninth grade, and again, this is all-around support for students. We'll also expand that transition process, and we'll take a look at what we did last year and meet with the building administrators, the counselors, the support teams, and start to think of additional steps that we can take to make sure that we are really meeting the needs of all of the students and families as they transition from one building to the next. And now I'm going to turn it over to Karen Ladell, who's going to talk about our special populations.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's kind of hard to speak. Well, many people are very familiar with the traditional...
Can you speak a little closer to the...
Sure.
Thank you.
Many people are very familiar with the traditional state report card, but not, are not as familiar with the, what we call the Special Education Report Card, or a Special Education Profile. The Special Education Profile, some of the, some of the indicators align with what you would consider as a traditional report card, but there are other indicators that are unique to it. The Special Education Report Card is based on the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and indicators established under that act that school systems have to monitor as it relates to services that it provides to students with disabilities and the results that those students with disabilities actually attain. If you went back to the glossary, you would see various terms like, and I just wrote all this down, didn't want to show you anything. They will, the report card measures things like the least restrictive environment, taking a look at environments where children with disabilities are served. As you'll notice, with many of our special ed monitoring, there are corrective actions connected to those monitoring. However, there are many areas where there is no corrective action, and the reason for that is, is because the IEP team makes those decisions. So just to give an example, there's one indicator that we did not meet, there's several that we didn't meet, but just to give an example, there would be the example of the indicator of the least restrictive environment. At the federal level, they have a recommendation in terms of where they think students with disabilities should be served. However, each individual IEP team makes that decision. So you may not hit the indicator, and there is no corrective action associated with it because we cannot tell an IEP team what to do. Another indic, and there's several indicators under that one indicator. You'll see another series, series of indicators that'll talk about the alternative assessment. We are rated on the number of students that participate and take an alternate assessment at the federal level. However, who makes the decision who is alternately assessed? The individual IEP team makes that decision. So as a federal indicator, they said, this is what we'd like to see, but there's no corrective action associated with it because the IEP team makes that individual decision. So it's a little different than the traditional report card. There are some areas that align, but there are some vast, vast differences that are really connected to decisions that a team makes that we cannot sway.
And it depends on the needs of each student, right? I mean, you can't just say each kid with an IEP has to do X, Y, Z because it's not necessarily appropriate.
And I understand, being a special educator...
Visualized is the keyword.
Yes.
Which is why the whole idea of a report card with standards is, you know, I was looking at this thing earlier today, and I was like, how can you make that work for all of the kids? You can't.
But I understand their intent. When you go all the way back to 1974, prior to 1974, their intent is that no child be in a basement.
Good.
No child be segregated in terms of children with disabilities in the history in our country. So that is their intent, is why they set these standards, but they still acknowledge, because there is no corrective action, we cannot tell you what to do, but we want you to strive toward this. And again, we provide training to teams, we provide training to our educators, but again, many of these come down to an individual decision based on those teams. So of the forty-six indicators, we met twenty-three of those indicators. The indicator that we are very, very proud of that really does align with the traditional state report card is the gap-closing indicator. What the gap-closing indicator does, which we are, like I said, very, very thrilled about, it looks at the performance of students with a disability as compared to their non-disabled peers on the state assessment. So we exceeded expectations in terms of our students with a disability are catching up in terms of their performance with the gap closure measure with their non-disabled peers. And there are six indicators, and we met five out of the six. So anyone who works with a public school, anyone who is in special education, that is the indicator that we focus on, because that's the indicator that aligns most with the traditional state report card in terms of how are students with a disability in terms of their proficiency doing as compared to individuals who don't have a disability. So in our district, again, we met five out of those six gap-closing indicators, meaning our students are exceeding in terms of that expectation as it relates to a gap between their performance on the state assessment and their non-disabled peers, which is really startling. So we are very proud of that work in terms of that gap closing. So that's, like I said, we will continue to monitor those indicators. The work that we're doing to support, the work that we're having particularly related to indicators that we have some impact over, which is proficiency, which we are doing well in, we are going to continue to have compliance training, we are doing internal IEP calibration. What's significant about that, again, we cannot tell an IEP team what to do, but we do want to make sure that they are aware of, that we do have a full continuum of services. We want to make sure that they're aware of what they can do in terms of supports for students with disabilities. Also, we are providing our co-teaching teams with training. We attribute a lot of our success in terms of the gap-closing measure and our success with that, with our work around co-teaching that's occurring in the district, just making no assumptions, co-teaching, and Dr. Gould referenced, some co-teaching, co-planning, co-serving when we first started. But basically, it just looks at having two educators in a room, supporting all of the children within that room. The traditional model, we're very, very accustomed to having an intervention specialist and a general educator, however, that is expanded. That's from the seventies. That is expanded. That could include two adults, that can include a peer professional going into a classroom, it could be a speech-language pathologist going into a classroom. And thinking about, what I like about the example of a speech-language pathologist, here you have this language expert who just stepped into a classroom, who can support who? Any and everybody in that classroom. So, you know, it's just of the, we attribute a lot of our success with our co-teaching work that's going on, that's being definitely led by Lindsay Barr in our district. We're also having PD in collaboration with our ESC, and they support a lot of our co-teaching work in addition to other trainings that we're providing in this area, so.
Karen, how is the, the least restrictive environment, how is that determined? Is that determined by the IEP team?
It's determined by the... It's determined by the IEP team, and it is based on the needs of the student. Under the law, the student, regardless of their disability, the first conversation that the team has is can little Karen be served in the general ed environment with her peers? If not, then there has to be an explanation as to why not, and then you move to different points on the continuum. So that's where you start. But the continuum, it is not bad. A continuum is necessary because everybody's needs, it's not a one size fits all. So there are some students who may have different needs that may not be able to be met within a gen ed environment, and the best individuals to make that decision is their team, which includes their parent, you know, which is a crucial part of the team at the federal level. Believe me, they're very serious about that. But they make very good decisions, these teams, in terms of where students can receive services. We also like to stress that just because you start your service at one continuum point does not mean this is where you end your services. It's fluid. So the idea is that students move across the continuum based on what they need, and those needs change. And IEP teams can be reconvened at any time to address those changes. But you're right, the team makes that decision. Okay. All right. At this point, then I'm going to turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Apadisitar?
So now we will move into goal area number two, which is educational approach. And we'll begin with Dr. Jenkins sharing some information in regards to curriculum and instruction.
I'm sorry, what I should do, I should have said this. As we did the last time, we did the first goal, questions, and then second goal. So, and there'll be an opportunity for questions at the end, and we have kind of sprinkled some questions through, but any other questions for goal one before we move to goal two?
Yeah. What Karen was just speaking about, our success rate with gap closing with the special ed population. If we are successful at increasing performance on, for our general education population, then that makes it harder for, or it means there's more work to be done for the students on IEPs. We don't want to lose those particular indicators. But, right, the goal is to move everybody up, and, but it can get more difficult, presumably.
One thing that's really, really wonderful, and there's tons of research to show this and support this, as the gen ed population goes and achieves, because where's the majority of our special ed students? They're in that gen ed class.
Right.
They go with them. They're sitting right there in that class, you know, learning whatever that con-
Observing.
So they all move together, which is wonderful. So we want them to just shoot to the stars so everybody else goes along with them. So it, it, it works that way.
A rising tide raises all boats.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, it's also the expectations, right? If we raise expectations, everybody's got something to work towards, and we'll, and we'll do it.
And our teachers are excellent at that. You should see some of the co-teaching teams in terms of you can walk in the room and who is who, you wouldn't know, and they're supporting all of the kids, so they all benefit, which is just great.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Back on curriculum and instruction, so we were on slide 13, and one of the things that was mentioned was family letters from adopted core materials, and I was just wondering if we would be able to see a sample of what one of those looks like at some point.
Oh, yeah. We could, we can get that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my other question is on the goal one, career and college and career readiness. And we were talking about finalizing the plan, the strategic plan for career and technical education, and I was wondering when that, and we talk about it being rolled out during the year, but do we have a timeframe of when that's going to be rolled out?
I feel, I can take that one. I did my last review of that probably in August to look at the draft and get some feedback. I still, a couple entities I want to circle back with, but I anticipate will be done end of the quarter. It'll be solid. Yeah.
And then at that point-
Because there's not a lot of changes.
Yeah. And then at that point, are we going to have a work session on that topic to go through and have that, like, presented to us formally?
We do have a work session coming up. I can't remember the date of it, but I believe it is before the year, but I gotta check on that.
Okay.
Yes.
So we can do a deep dive on that topic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Liz, this is the plan that I believe we last saw when we were talking through your evaluation. There was a, there was a draft. There was a preliminary draft, what, in May-
Right.
-that you shared in one of our board, weekly board reports.
Right. Then I made some adjustments based on your feedback, but also based on meeting with Bob to kind of go over some of the reporting structures that were there, some of the other elements, too. I also think because, you know, we're gaining our understanding of the report card, and there, there are specific metrics tied to CTE, not only industry credentials or work-based learning, that we want to just make sure that that is like really clean and tight in that plan.
Yeah, I'm really interested in the new 11 measures on that and learning more about that.
Yeah.
So whenever we do that deep dive, I'd like more information on that. Thank you.
I guess one thing that I just wanted to point out, as we talk about, you know, the incredible work, inspiring work that is happening in our classrooms and guided by our incredible teachers and supported by our families. When we look at the state report cards, the state would like us to think that all districts are the same.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not. In Ohio, last year, I haven't done the dive because the data is so new, but, but last year, of the 611 school districts in the state of Ohio, 32 are both majority-minority and majority-poverty. We are one of those 32 districts, as we all know well. Of those 32 districts, none earned more than two stars on the state report card. And so when we look at state report cards and we sort of, people who don't dive deep into the work, scratch their heads and, and sort of begin to point fingers, we really need to demand that they look deeper because what they need to look at is the numbers that we're talking about tonight, the numbers of our students who move on to college, the number of our students who are graduating on time. Because when you look at those numbers, and I'm looking right now at a study that was put out by the National Center for Education Statistics using Department of Commerce census data, and this is from 2021, the total college attendance right after route of college enrollment for 18 to 24-year-olds was 40%.
Nationwide.
Nationwide. For African-Americans, it was under 40%. It does not report income, but we can assume with safety that there are, we know that there are additional burdens for families who don't have all of the resources. And so, you know, as we talk about the measures that do and don't matter, tonight, what we're seeing are the measures that matter because these are the, are the measures of the real kids who are really working with real goals in our real classrooms, with our real teachers, and they go home to their real families and try to move those families forward. So I think that we, we need to measure both of those things. We need to keep an eye on the state, where we are, because the state doesn't give a whole lot of data, and what they give is not very good, but it is real, and it's what people who buy houses look for, look at. But we also need to be very proud on nights like tonight when we see the incredible work happening in our classrooms.
And I'd just like to make one more comment, and that is when we were looking at slide 15, and we were talking about focusing on transitions from, you know, fifth to sixth grade, eighth grade to ninth grade, and we're doing a lot of focus on that. I just want to thank you for that work, and I'm really glad to see that we are focusing on that because those transitions really can impact, you know, whether or not a kid is successful in the next year. And those are hard, those are hard years. So I applaud all of you for looking at that and, and making a focus on that. So thank you.
So that is the national, that's where we fit.
So we can move on to goal two?
Great, great. Yep. Okay, so for goal two, educational approach, curriculum instruction department focused mainly on two objectives. The first objective was to provide professional learning for staff on the tier one instructional core. So some action steps that took place regarding that objective for last year included a focus on the 13 elements of explicit instruction, and that was during like grade-level meetings with teachers. Also building a common knowledge around the need and use of high-quality instructional materials and professional learning on the science of reading for teachers for grades K through three and intervention specialists for grades K through five. As an added note, I wanted to make mention that the science of reading refers to a body of research from the fields of education, cognitive psychology, developmental psychology, and neuroscience that explains how individuals read and what is best in terms of instructional practices. So in terms of this objective, our next steps for this year will be the application of the 13 elements of explicit instruction as we implement our high-quality instructional materials. We're also conducting professional learning in support of the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials for English and, or excuse me, ELA and math. We're also doing some training on high-quality instructional materials for tier two in math at the elementary level, and we're conducting professional learning, continuing that science of reading learning for intervention specialists for grades six through 12. So really covering the full breadth of the intervention specialists this year with science of reading. Our second objective for curriculum instruction was providing the professional learning for staff on the, using technology to effectively support instruction. So last year included the facilitation of smart panel training for the elementary teachers and the establishment of building-based technology coaches to support the instructional approaches in the building. So each building had a technology coach that was designated. So this year, we're going to complete that smart panel training for teachers, and we're going to continue to work with building-based technology coaches to support instructional technology, and we're going to have a particular focus on GoGuardian. So GoGuardian allows teachers to monitor what students are doing on their Chromebooks. It's a very useful tool, especially if you want to keep kids engaged and focused on, on the lesson, so.
Is that available in classrooms, at the classroom level?
Yes, yeah.
Now you want it, huh?
I don't know if I do.
You don't want to know?
Ignorance can be bliss.
So now, I'll turn it over to Bob.
All right, as we think about our action steps related, related to goal two for college and career readiness, you'll continue to see our focus on AP, which is Advanced Placement Career and Technical Education, and then, of course, our College Credit Plus courses and offerings. Last year, when we were thinking about 22, 23, we had 41% of our AP test takers score a three or higher on at least one exam. So we continue to look at the data that was presented this summer in order to make some adjustments and continue to think about how those instructional strategies that Dr. Jenkins was just talking about, how they also impact courses like our AP courses. What does it look like for us to continue to make progress when we know our goals are really around creating more opportunity and access for students? And we also want to see the achievement continue to increase. In that same vein, this last school year, we created the associate degree pathway with Tri-C. I know many of you got a chance to come to the college and career day that we had for eighth graders. Thank you very much. And we're going to continue that this school year, but I do want to report that we have 33 current eighth, ninth graders that started their high school and their college career on the same day. I think that that was shared at a recent board meeting as an update, and that's because of the opportunity that we have forged with Tri-C. So we want to continue to make that available to students as we move forward, but we also want to know, with those 33 students, are they having that course success? Are they continuing to stay on that pathway? Four weeks in, I've got a chance to visit those classes, and students are having success. I know we're just at that, that progress report time is coming up, but we are paying attention, and we are really making sure that the students are going to come out of those classes feeling successful and also earning those college credits. So many of them continue to have the Avid program as support, which is extremely helpful, and that also becomes one of our action steps for this continuing school year where all of our secondary schools, Monticello, Roxborough Middle School, and Heights High, all are deepening their Avid implementation beyond an elective course, and they're moving into school-wide implementation. That means that they're spreading those Avid strategies beyond just an elective course. The kids get a chance to opt in. They're really thinking about how do we use those strategies in every math class, every English class, every science class. And that's really one of our big components to move towards school-wide that will impact all students. We also want to increase the exposure and enrollment for career and technical education as that is part of the strategic plan for CTE, and we know that that has been a primary focus here in CHUH is to get more students acclimated into those career and technical education programs. That starts with students knowing about it, creating early exposure opportunities. Last year, we took many of our eighth graders to visit the career and technical education program so they even knew that those programs existed, so they can build that into their plan as they move from their ninth and 10th grade year to the, their junior year when they would actually enroll in those programs. And really, one of the best ways for our students to hear about the success of those programs is to have contact with the students who are currently in those programs. They continue to be the best source of recruitment, is just hearing what students are doing in the, in the programs. I know Dr. Jenkins, Jenkins and I just met with an autotech student that actually came through Boulevard and recognized Dr. Jenkins from, he's like, weren't you my principal?
Actually, Rock or Roxelle?
Oh, Roxelle, Roxelle. But really just getting a chance to say, like, that student knows exactly where they are, why they are there, and what they plan to do. And it's just amazing to have that student who is like, I'll share it with anybody who will listen to me. So we want to continue to make that connection between our existing CTE students as ambassadors to the program. When we think about the monitoring of students with the viable post-secondary plan, there's been a lot of work around how do we make this not just for some of our students, like students in the CTE programs, but what does it look like for us to build this in so all students have access? And you probably remember me talking about the PACE framework, which stands for Planning and Career Exploration. This is something that has come out of our partnership with the GCCC, which is the Greater Cleveland Career Consortium. And as a partner in that work with the GCCC, we are in cohort one to implement the PACE framework in grades six through 12. So that means students start taking career interest inventories, start thinking about the strengths that they have, start working with networking and how to network, and then, of course, continue that career development with internship opportunity, work-based learning opportunities. And all of that happens as part of our PACE framework. Even there are partners like College Now, Junior Achievement. There are several other partners, too, that I should be able to articulate, and they're not coming to mind right now, but I know that those two partners really are helping us think about getting up and running. This current school year, we're trying to implement what we designed last year through the PACE framework with something called Pathway OS. And so, again, that is really the, the place where students will be able to go in and complete activities through their advisory time, through their rocks and action time, through their learners becoming leaders time, through their freshman seminar classes, and really get a chance to document their progress as they move from grades six through 12. So you'll, when I, when we do some of this deeper dive, maybe at an upcoming work session, I could actually show you what students will be engaged in and how they can earn their badges, their PACE badges each school year, and it really creates that portfolio of experience for them as they get ready to think about work-based learning. And it really creates that portfolio of experience for them as they get ready to think about work-based learning or internships in their junior and senior year. The last piece is we're going to continue the, the work around Portrait of a Graduate. We know that there's a lot of things related to how students are articulating their interests. Some of that is going to be housed within our PACE framework. We know that there's a lot to be learned around research of Portrait of a Graduate from other districts. And then as we've even started down this path, we think that there's a lot of power in what Dr. Towns at the high school has already created as somewhat of our Portrait of a Graduate. And I know people may have even heard this, that the, the goal at the high school is a diploma in every hand, a purpose in every heart, and a plan in every head. And I think that that's some of the work that is really going to be critical as we define what does that mean? So that becomes our Portrait of a Graduate. So I think that we've got a really good start. I think that resonates. That was shared with students even in our opening day assembly at the high school this year. And I think students and staff really gravitated towards those three concepts. And I think if we flush that out, that will be a really good start on our Portrait of a Graduate.
Can you repeat that? I want to make sure I get all three of those.
Yes, and actually it will give me a chance to not screw it up.
I'm writing it down here as fast as I can.
Because I think I actually, I inverted them, so take two. The Portrait of a Graduate at the high school is a diploma in every hand. It is a plan in every head, and a purpose in every heart. I apologize sincerely to Dr. Towns for needing a second take on that, but I'm on camera, so I guess it's a little bit more complicated, but, and I do think that that really resonates. It's such a, when I heard him say that, I'm like, there, there is our Portrait of a Graduate. We just need to figure out how to then be able to articulate all those components to students. So at this point in time, I will turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Gould. Am I turning it back over to you for equity integration?
So as we've heard this evening, a lot of things are happening in goal one and two. But one of the things that resonates across all of the work that we're doing is our equity integration. So our objective here is to make sure that, to train district and staff on the equity modules. But in that, it goes further than just the training on the actual modules. We've held an equity retreat for our building and district leaders, as well as board members have also taken part in our equity training. We are making sure that staff that are coming into our district are part of this equity integration. So they're also involved in the training. We also last year worked with our TASSO student program around the discussion around equity. And we plan to continue to do that work as well. As well as we are looking at our particular goals and metrics that we have in the strategic plan and really are aligning our work around those focus areas that have been outlined in our equity policy. As we move toward next steps for twenty-three, twenty-four, we just recently had an equity retreat with our building leadership team members and our building principals around the upcoming modules. We are now moving from a focus on equity, on equity and now moving to what we call reviewing equity non-negotiables. This will be a framework of which we will vet all of our work up against when we are taking a look at equity. And moving from that, we are also looking at a systemic approach toward how we look at teaching and learning around those equitable, equitable activities that are in the modules. I want to thank Malia, who has been part of our Parent Ally Academy as well as our Equity Task Force. We've held three of those sessions virtually with our partners, Integrative Comprehensive Systems for Equity. We will be holding another one on October fourth. And Beverly and Liz both attended the Parent Academy that we just had this weekend in regards to equity and sharing with our community around what the district is doing in the equity modules and also having them be a part of the equity work and getting feedback from them as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
Last year at the end of the TASSO sessions,
Yes.
there was a group of students who were interested in starting an after-school group. Do you know if that has happened or continued?
It has not happened yet. I'm in discussion with Steve Walker and Dr. Towns to get them up and running and to move to our next phase in that as well.
Yeah, because they had some extraordinary things to say.
Yeah, they did. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Abduzatar, who will share around social emotional learning and academic supports.
Okay, so can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, the goal that we're working toward is to ensure fidelity to the multi-tiered system of support structure. And the multi-tiered system of support structure is a school-wide, data-driven proactive framework for improving both learning and behavioral outcomes for all students. It utilizes evidence-based practices and effective systems to improve core instruction and intervention. So the acronym that we use is MTSS. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the team developed and finalized the initial MTSS handbook. Structures were coordinated to define the MTSS teams and outline the MTSS meeting purposes, ensuring its alignment to the MTSS approach. Finally, the initial MTSS training was provided to school teams on the structures as well as the purpose of the teams. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the team will review and revise the handbook to include any updates. We will also develop and update forms to guide the process. And then continue training teams on the MTSS process, either in our principal leadership meetings or going out to the actual teams in their buildings as they work through the process. And then we will support teams as they implement MTSS at their schools by making sure that we have those measures in place to provide that support. For the next goal is for counselors and social workers to collaborate to develop trauma-informed action plans. The main purpose of the trauma-informed action plan is to utilize strategies and provide supports as to not re-traumatize students and adults. So the teams developed and implemented trauma-informed action plans last year in collaboration with each other and in looking at the different needs at their buildings. These trauma-informed action plans focused on adult practices in the school setting and adult understanding of trauma and its impact on students. For this upcoming school year, for the twenty-three, twenty-four, the current school year, our trauma-informed action plans will continue to be developed. We will utilize the district data drive, the data to drive the goals and the action steps. We will also review the plans from last year and their effectiveness to make sure that whatever plans we develop this year have the impact that we desire. Plans will include action steps to account for adult implementation, which is the daily practices in the classroom and then building-wide practices. We will also include student engagement piece, which looks at how students are supported. And then a parent engagement piece, which will look at how parents will be included and informed of our trauma-informed action plan. And I will turn it over to Karen.
Hey, we're looking at the second goal for special populations. And this really directly aligns with the first goal with special populations in terms of success we had with the gap closing using our co-teaching. So this measure looks at how we're going to continue, or how we did use co-teaching last year to support not only, I want to make sure everyone's clear that the co-teaching supports all students. So it is just not specifically students with disabilities, even though the impact it had on students with disabilities was significant in a very positive direction, but it supports and benefits all students. So the work that we did last year in terms of supporting this was definitely IEP compliance training, and that training included our intervention specialists as well as all of our related service providers. Internal IEP definitely continued with the calibration, training for the new teaching teams, co-teaching teams, and then of course, the continued professional development in collaboration with the ESC. Moving forward for this year, what we're continuing in terms of our plan, we are going to have the compliance training. There will be the IEP calibration training, training for the new co-teaching teams, as well as continued training that we have always done with our ESC in terms of supporting our work. And then co-teaching strategies and critical thinking lessons at the elementary and middle school levels for gifted. So that will be occurring this school year, okay? And yes.
How many co-tea, how many co-teaching teams are there in the district-ish?
That actually varies, and I don't want to say, because we are actually in the middle of this. So it actually varies, so we just want to make sure to give you a firm number, and I will get you a firm number. Because we've got some shifts and some changes that go on.
But it happens at all three building levels?
It happens across all levels. It's just what it looks like at each level and how much engagement or participation we have from teams at each level. So there are some teams at the high school, middle school, and elementary levels.
I'm only aware of, of one team at the high school, because I remember when that started, it was a big deal. And it, it was a terrific shift for both the teachers and the students in their classrooms. And so now that we're expanding, and we have expanded, I just want to get a sense of where we are on that.
I'll get you a definite number across the levels. At this point then, I'm going to bring up Mr. Resenko, who has been very instrumental in leading, let's go to the next slide, our Positive Behavior Supports. So he is our lead for this work, Mr. Resenko.
Good evening, Ms. Kirby and members of the board. I appreciate you inviting me to a board meeting tonight. Just taking a look at PBIS across the district. I'm very excited about the work that all of our stakeholders have contributed to implement PBIS at all levels, pre-K through grade twelve. During the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the PBIS teams completed the tiered fidelity inventory. There are two checks with each team, school team, to determine the fidelity of implementation and where they are, so they could plan for, you know, next action steps to continually improve. We also completed the PBIS Self-Assessment Survey, which is a summative survey completed by all district stakeholders in the schools. And, you know, it's a rating of where they believe we are with the implementation of the four core systems of PBIS. And then all of our building-level action plans contain a climate goal with PBIS action steps. So we have multiple layers within the district and each of the schools working on the implementation of PBIS. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the district team and school teams will create action steps and components around the challenges that each of their buildings are facing and implements the action steps and quarterly monitoring to positively impact those areas where they believe are challenges. Schools will continue to complete the tiered fidelity inventory this year. It's important for us to continue to build capacity through professional development. Part of that is the TFI to ensure that the teams are running the way that they're supposed to be running. And we're also going to complete the PBIS Self-Assessment prior to spring break. You know, we've had much discussion as district leadership teams to determine when the best time is to capture our staff's input in how PBIS is functioning in each of the buildings. Moving forward, we have structured support from our behavior interventionist, Ms. Walton, and with also the support of the state support team to our buildings. You know, based on data points from the TFI and the PBIS Self-Assessment Survey and district data, will require some more support to ensure that we're making the most beneficial progress for students and staff as possible. We're also continuing to do the PBIS coaching session. This is a collaboration between the State Support Team Three and our PBIS teams across the district. What it does is it, you know, ensures that we're running effectively. And also it helps build capacity in the PBIS framework, okay, and its implementation. We are also implementing the root cause analysis recommendations from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in regards to climate. And the PBIS professional development is ongoing. We're going to be leveraging some different online technologies for PBIS to support various stakeholders across the district. So we're excited about that this school year. And then really, you know, you know, taking a look at honest school suspension, you know, reducing that number. We know, we know that that's an opportunity. And, you know, keeping kids in the seat, having one plan and one goal is really important to the success of our schools.
Right, right. If they're not in the building, we can't teach them.
That's right. We need them in the seat.
We need them in, in class.
To receive the high-quality instructions that I've been hearing about all night.
Hey, so, thank you all for, don't leave yet, you might have a question. So thank you all for going through goal two. I, one thing I do want to point out to board members, because we have been talking about PBIS a lot. This fact sheet from the state is very helpful, kind of a, you know, an overview of exactly what PBIS is. So just a good resource. So questions as relates to goal two, or discussion?
I have a couple. That's shocking, I know. On slide nineteen, when we talked about forty-one percent of AP test takers earned a score of three or higher on at least one exam, can you remind me, and if you don't have the exact number, you can get it to me later, what percent of our students are taking at least one P, one AP exam, or one AP course? Yeah. I know it was a pretty high number, so I was just curious about that. Also, just wondering when we are holding the next College and Career Day. And you might not have a date yet, but when you do, please let us know, because we'd like to attend.
It's December nineteenth.
Okay.
Well, there you go. Where's my calendar?
Know the date, okay.
That's a Tuesday.
This is a little maybe odd question, but I'm hearing more and more of our families talking about their kids taking a gap year. And I'm just wondering if we are doing anything to provide supports for students and families who choose this option or if we're, if that's even on our radar. But it seems like lately I'm hearing more and more and more about that. And if kids are going to take a gap year, I want to make sure it's a successful and useful experience for them and it helps them move on into college and career at the end of that.
So I can just say, one of the resources that we put together last year, because we did also hear about a number of students asking for gap year resources, was to say, let's talk about what that really means. So we actually created a document that said, here are some activities that students who take a gap year would actually engage in. So we, you know, there's probably a list of twenty or thirty different opportunities for students that are saying, I think I want to pursue a gap year. And we also link them up with national organizations that specialize in that area. So, you know, it's not you trying to go out and find yourself on your own. Like there's actually groups and organizations that help support that. And then I also think that one of the components to keep students in the pipeline is to have good communication. Like we need accurate information so we can follow up with students after the fact. So we've got multiple ways that we've been reaching out to students. Obviously, there's that one component of their CHUH email kind of ends as they finish up with us. But we do spend a lot of time collecting phone numbers, social media accounts, personal email accounts as students are exiting in their exit surveys, so we can continue to do that follow-up. We actually have been working a lot with the Alumni Foundation as well to help connect the dots between, you know, those grads and the, the network of support that they also offer. But I could actually share the document that we put together so we can look at the gap year resources together.
That'd be great, and I hope it's prominent somewhere where people can find it on our website. Because I, I think it's one of those things that, for parents, at least the parents I know that, you know, are experiencing this, that their child's, you know, considering or doing a gap year, it kind of came as a surprise to them. So they're not quite sure where to go at that point, so, you know, and they want to support their where to go at that point, so, you know, and they want to support their student, but they maybe, you know, aren't aware of the resources that we, you know, you've put together for that. And just two more comments, they're not questions, but I love that you're using the CTE students as ambassadors to promote the program for other students, because I think that that, you know, is such a credible source for students. And frankly, a lot of times, it's the parents who are kind of against their kids doing CTE, so, you know, talking to a student who's successful and enjoying it, and can, you know, really sell the program is, is a wonderful idea. And just, you know, kudos to Dr. Towns. I love the, a diploma in every hand, a plan in every head, and a purpose in every heart. That's just wonderful. I love that.
Amazing.
So, kudos to him, and thank you for giving him credit for it. It's wonderful.
And not just stealing a good line.
So thank you. Thank you for all your work.
My T-shirt size is large. Just saying.
Yeah, God, that would be a great T-shirt.
So, you know, there's a
In progress.
A lot of murals that are coming up at the high school, going up. I mean, that seems to be, that would make an interesting theme, or mural.
We have enough artists in our community who could make something really gorgeous with that.
Then they can make a T-shirt out of it.
And we've got great telephone poles that banners can be hung on, and we have all of the screens around all of our fields.
Yeah, there's, I, I think this one needs to go everywhere.
That's great.
Kindergarten enrollment, straight through. Darn it, Towns.
Yeah. Why didn't you tell us this one five years ago?
Anybody else have questions, comments?
No, I've been interrupting as we go, so.
Well, I want to thank the team for putting this together and all the hard work that everyone's been leading the district in these two big old areas. This is all hands on deck for sure, from our teachers, to our non-certified staff, to our administrators, to our board office staff as well, to our parents, community members, board members, it's a collective effort. And it isn't easy, but it is important. So I just appreciate your commitment and sticking, sticking with it and continuing to push. And so, we're going to keep pushing. We've made some gains, and we still have, you know, some work to do, so excited to continue to work. But thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much.
I'll take the roll call to adjournment.
Thank you all so much. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I second.
Hang on, I've got to figure out where I'm at now.
We've left him in the dust.
All right, adjournment is at eight o'clock. Who moved?
I did.
Seconded, Ody seconded.
All right, Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Me.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Ms. Sereni?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Hey, thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Yes, thank you all so much.